Thank you for seeing us this afternoon. We've been working closely with the CEFP committee as well as several of the bond meetings at some of the locations throughout the county to get community input on what community members, as well as parents and key stakeholders in the Lincoln County education system, what they would like to see possibly included in the potential bond that we may decide to run in the coming year. So yesterday, the members of the CEFP met and sort of hashed out some of the local area goals, and this afternoon, we'd like to report on those.
May I just start? One of the things too, though, in our hashing all this out was the fact that we had all schools represented. There was either a parent or an administrator, someone from each of the schools there. And we tried to come to consensus on at least two things for each school. Of course, we'll narrow that down as we move along. And that was a lot of discussion going on there because we've got a lot of things that we're kind of carrying the load for our communities and our parents out there. And we want to make sure that they are involved and they are in favor of what we're doing. So with that being said, all we came up with for the schools were, for West Hamlin, they were wanting the two classrooms, some additional classrooms, to accommodate their overcrowding problem. They want to make sure that there's special ed population and especially to get rid of the portables that are there at the building. Now with that, we, there was discussion around moving the fifth grade to Guyan Valley to make it a true middle school concept, which would be fifth grade through eighth grade. There was some discussion about bringing Rangers fifth grade down also with that so that it would allow room for at Ranger for their problems there and help them with that. But that being said, they also need some renovations and some construction maintenance problems at those schools as well.
If you don't mind, one of the concerns, I think, that had been brought forward from the architectural firm was that with the existing size of West Hamlin Elementary, just to add classrooms might not be the best fix because of the fact that you're going to be limited by the size of your cafeteria and by some of your other common spaces that would be utilized by the number of students. So something would have to be addressed if we're going to look at expanding classrooms, you know, at West Hamlin and the use of the common facilities like the cafeteria and the gymnasiums and those kind of things. So that's something that we have to take into consideration. The other thing that we had also talked about was keeping some commonality in the county in the way of the structure because we already have two pre-existing pre-K eight facilities between Hamlin and Harts. And if we were to do, for example, let's say we were to take Guyan Valley and make it a five through eight, would that be what we would want to also do in the Duval area because we potentially might not want to have three middle school structures just to maybe do. So that was the other thing that had also been discussed.
Right, and that leads to some of the Midway situation. There was a survey that went out from Midway to kind of get a feel from all the parents of what they wanted, and they were pretty adamant that they did not want a pre-K through eight. I think with further, no, I won't get there. So the two options for Midway were to include the pre-K through four or five, whatever level they decided to go with, the middle school at Midway at a Samarco location, or to build just a school for Midway on the corridor G there, which would then have Duval having renovations for the middle school if we take the primary, or renovations either way with the existing.
And I do believe that the general consensus among the group, though, was that a PK five would probably be in the best interest of the county as well as the communities because it keeps some semblance of a smaller school. It just still keeps that structure of an elementary and they're, you know, not the PK eight, which it sounds like from our discussions in the, within the smaller groups, that they're adamantly against. But at the same time, it's also alleviating two different situations, and that is, one, overcrowding at Duval-
Right.
-and then the existing facility of Midway.
And two, I think, I think that the community as coming from Midway, I just think that our community, they don't want to lose that community feel. They don't want to lose who they are. They feel like Midway represents them. But I think that they would be in agreement with going with the combination of the pre-K four or five from Duval with Midway in that situation. Because the biggest complaint they had was they didn't want the pre-K eight through eight. They didn't want the eighth graders with those preschools children. We had thrown around some option of having one campus with two schools on the campus, and there were lots of discussion about that was going on there.
May I add?
Yes, sir.
And my understanding, you're correct, then, the two options are, one, to build pre-K eight school just for the current Midway population, and the other, build a school maybe further away that would take in some of the students that presently go to Duval in those grades.
No, the pre-K, I'm sorry, the pre-K five for just the Midway students. It would be the same configuration that's currently there, but it would be in a different location, perhaps on the corridor somewhere is what they were thinking.
Well, you mentioned Samarco, and that's the reason I got confused.
Well, the other option was the pre-K five in the Samarco area, but combining Duval and Midway's pre-K through five together.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Those aren't the two options.
Those are the two options.
Those are the two options. Either just a pre-K five for just the Midway area, the same configuration, but in a different, new school in a different location.
Right.
And leaving Duval.
And leaving Duval out, or combining-
That's a PK through eight.
Yeah.
Leaving Duval as a PK through eight.
Or combining Duval. Those were the two options.
Are you okay to go to Samarco with the pre-K?
Yes, as long as it didn't make it the pre-K eight. And I'm just speaking, not necessarily that I'm total agreement with that, but I'm speaking for-
That was a consensus.
The consensus of the parents from their survey that we put out there. And those are the ones, that's who we're serving, so we have to listen to them.
Let me, let me just, you seem like you're so confused.
I'm sorry.
So here are the options, here were the options that we were just presenting. One is a PK through five, same configuration as Midway as it is currently, but with a new facility. Okay, same student body. The second option is to do a PK through five-
Same configuration.
Same configuration, but also adding-
Right.
-the PK through five at Duval and having it in a middle point location in this Samarco area had been suggested, which would make Duval a six through eight.
Okay, that was going to be a consensus.
Right, with the renovations then happening to make Duval the middle school.
So in one scenario, Duval would remain PK eight-
Yes.
-and the other one, it would just be middle school.
Correct.
Okay.
And that takes us to Duval, which we sort of clarified the potential, if there was a PK through five built at Samarco, those students, PK through five, would go to Samarco. The Samarco area, we would rate were to, the second option was to renovate the existing building for a PK eight with the hopes to get the students out of the modulars.
I think that one of the things they talked about when we were talking about the facilities, you know, and the shape of, and the age of the facilities, that they were trying to look at the schools that were in direst need right now. Yes, there's a lot of schools that are in dire need, but we kind of have to put them on a continuum of who's the worst and who needs more assistance sooner than later, hopefully to reach all schools at some point in time, but that's where we are.
Is this a prioritized list, I'm sorry? What you're giving us-
The ones and twos?
Yeah.
Yeah, from those communities. Prioritize from the schools.
What you're giving is the whole list instead of prioritized list?
No.
That's to need?
No, there is no particular order, by the way, of all my schools.
No.
It's coming soon.
To a place right here.
Yeah. The Lincoln County High School meeting, which had also, all those topics had been discussed also last night. One of the needs was the completion of the athletic facilities at the high school. And that would be comprised of a football field with a track that would also have a facility for our wrestling, so we could bring them back on site. It would include weightlifting facilities. It would be completion of our baseball field and soccer fields. So it would comprise completing the athletic facility needs of the entire high school. The second item is currently, the high school is filled to capacity when it comes to the career technical education offerings, the vocational offerings. And with 70% of our student body in the skilled pathway seeking employment or some sort of two-year college immediately after high school, we don't have any room to expand based upon the fact that there's no rooms to expand them to, to offer, for example, a second healthcare field or an auto body or several other types of career tech ed courses we could put in, like machine, like a machine shop. So those were the two items for Lincoln County High School. Moving to Guyan Valley, pretty much their wishlist was a new six through eight facility built adjacent to the existing gym. I think that from some of the minutes that I've read, though, that was very important for them to keep some sort of heritage of their existing facility embodied in the new construction. Hamlin's requests were to renovate the existing PK eight. There was a lot of, there was a little bit of discussion between still keeping the pre-K here at the central office area and making it a, its own PK eight, or PK-
PK Academy.
Because it seems to be working well, and just renovating the existing building. The Ranger area had their top prioritized request was a new PK five built, PK five facility built south of the present site along Route 10.
Again, that would go back to the West Hamlin situation. That would take some of the overcrowding from the West Hamlin because some of those students would be shifting over.
Correct. Well, and I, I think that, you know, I think the other thing that had been discussed is that it would also move some boundaries by the facility size so that it might alleviate some even from the Harts area.
Correct.
It was mentioned, I mean, it was just mentioned. Then, then of course, Harts, they, number one, requested that they had from the Harts area with new athletic facilities built across from Route, from Route 10 from the school. One of the, I think the consensus among the group was that I felt like they really wanted to make sure that the message is clear to our, our community is, is that we need to also realize where we're going to be in the next 10 years if the bond isn't passed. When we talk about the dire needs of some of our schools, I think it's important that we look at, if the bond isn't passed, what is the shape of those schools going to be in the next 10 years, especially if we don't have additional money coming in to be able to take care of those facilities.
And we've got, yeah, we can't be selfish about what we're wanting either. We've got to look at, this is all of Lincoln County, and as Mr. Sax has said, they're all going to flow right into his school. So we've got to think about what's good for all of us going in here, and there may, you know, we may have to talk about some give and take on all of it, that we can't just stand out firm just because we didn't get what we wanted here, but we've, we've got to talk about, you know, what's important. Our children, this is what we're doing this for. It isn't for us, and it isn't because I didn't get my way back in so-and-so year, or this wasn't passed then. It's, it's the kids that we have right now and that are coming. So we need to really make sure that our focus stays on what our purpose in education is.
Did the committee, I'm assuming, looked closely at health and safety issues in your holistic fees? Any safety or-
Well, I think that that's-
Issues at each school, or is Mr. Burkes covered that?
Well, I'm sure he will, I'm sure he'll hit on that, but I think that that was a general consensus of all the meetings that were in the different locations in the county that the community was expressing to the CEFP was, you know, we need some of these, we need some of these things fixed because of safety concerns and long-term safety concerns for our children.
Some more urgent than others.
Right.
Mr. Sax, the Ranger school, did you say a new school south or north of the existing school?
They indicated south.
But be north.
Was it supposed to be north?
North.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Even with that, it may help with some of the West Hamlin children also, you know, because they're all-
That had been mentioned, yes.
You know, and several of those, you know, we have several portables that are, we've got addition upon addition upon addition and then portables on that, but other schools have the same, same thing. We just have to think about, you know, where our kids are going to be, you know, in 10 years. Where do we, where do we really want for them, and what do we want them to have available to them?
I also believe it's a general consensus, and Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but that the committee did feel that the two schools that were in the worst shape in the way of structure was Midway and Guyan Valley.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, we can follow up with this discussion and be a little bit informal. We have different people that have been on the committee as well as attending the meetings, and I know many of you attended several meetings, so we can take that track now if you like.
Thank you. And they did a really great job of capturing a lot of the discussion. As you can imagine, it's very difficult to, to come up with a plan that makes everybody happy, okay? And our principals and committee members are very passionate about having the best schools possible across the district. And we, we know we have some constraints with budget. In fact, we received some additional information about local bonding capacity, and we're a little less than 25 million. Now, those figures will change every year, okay? And, you know, two, three years ago, or whenever it was, those figures were closer to 27 or million. So with reappraisals, reassessments, and all that going on, on an annual basis, those figures will jump around some. And so the figure's more like 24.7 million right now. Now, you know, what the board decides to go for, of course, is a discussion that needs to happen. We couldn't be more pleased with the committee and the strong desire for improvement across the district. We're anticipating another meeting on the 22nd at 4:00 of the CEFP committee. And at that point, what we will do is take all of these ideas, and we will try to narrow those down to a manageable amount of information as it relates to the budget and what we can realistically do. That's a tough process because everybody wants and deserves the best. And, and I would say to Sean right now that all of this information, the presentation tonight, is certainly not a plan. We're at a discussion stage, and we will be narrowing down in the near future to hopefully what we believe will be manageable ideas as it relates to the bond call, and then, and we think we'll make a lot of progress on the 22nd. And so I know you have a board meeting right after that, and we would certainly be happy to share another step forward at that point. Dave?
That's pretty much it. We've had some really good meetings with communities, and we had a lot of good input. We had to narrow it down just to get this list, so we, we had, we had a lot of really good meetings, I thought. Traveled all over the place and then some, so it was, it was a lot of fun. But like, like we talked about earlier, like the principals talked about, it's, it's about the kids and about what the hard part is going to be trying to decide what to fit into that, that number that we come up with. And hopefully by the 22nd, we will have some idea as to what some of these projects cost based on enrollments and that sort of thing we talked about, as well as some information from the school building authority on what they can input along with your bonding dollars to make a total project to sort of sweeten the pot, if you will. That's our goal by the 22nd, so when we meet with the committee, we'll have a little bit of understanding on some dollar amounts, and they can look at projects and come back to you with a, a defined list or recommendations, if you will.
Yes.
Now, when you have this next meeting, I'm just, I'm trying to think here, aren't some decisions going to have to be made probably by the board, I'm assuming, as to these configurations? Or are you going to provide two different, you know, two separate amounts of figures? Take Midway, for instance, you know, if you want to go with having a school in the Midway area, and you're going to be dealing with one set of figures versus building another school that's going to incorporate the students from Duval both I mean.
We anticipated at the next meeting wrestling with those ideas, and in a perfect world, after that meeting, we can share with you what the committee feels is the best recommendation. Now, the board always has the latitude to add, take away, and, and we don't expect the board to make a decision immediately on that. You need a little bit of time to reflect. So our timeframe's okay. We're in a really good shape right now. And this whole process is so complex, the last thing we want to do is rush and make the wrong judgment. But we think after that next meeting, that the process that we will use for narrowing will help us get to a point that we can define that a lot more clearly than tonight. Okay?
So you think, I was just going to say, so you think that when you meet on the 22nd at 4:00, then that you will kind of, you will then narrow down all the options?
Yes.
And you can do that in time enough to meet with us at 6:00?
Well, we're not presuming to have all the answers at 6:00 for you, but, but within a two-hour period of time, we think the committee can come to grips with these ideas, and we'll use a process that will help them to, they're going to have to make choices. I mean, board is going to have to make some tough choices, and so they're going to be wrestling some with budgets too. And, and then when, when we get the sentiment of the committee, we'll share as much of that as possible that night. In fact, everything we get that night. Now, will we need to have another CEFP meeting? Possibly, but we think we'll make substantial progress on the 22nd.
But on the 22nd, are you going to have a estimate on how much?
Yes, yes, sir. And the committee will have that. They, you know, because they can, you can't really make informed decisions if you don't have as much money talking about for each of these projects. And Dave's been working on some already, and, but we didn't really have it narrowed down until this much until last night. So, so now, we'll spend a little bit more time putting figures to these, and then when we come back on the 22nd, the committee will have that. Now, those figures are not going to be locked into concrete either because when you start thinking about buying a site or all kinds of other variables, those numbers are going to move some. So we're going to challenge the committee, don't get scared, okay? We're going to challenge the committee to wrestle with a number that's less than what we think we might have, because you can't start out with a plan and you've already spent all your money and then-
Have to buy piece of property.
Yeah, and have to buy piece of property or something like that. So, so it's going to be, it's going to be, already getting some frowns, but it's going to, it's going to be a tough process, but, but it's a great committee, they're passionate. We made a lot of progress last night, had a lot of discussion all over the place, and I would have to say it's not too late for some other idea to come in here, but we, we, it's coming together, okay?
Mr. President, may I make a comment? Mr. President, may I make a suggestion in that we have, in our next board agenda, so they can kind of report to us for whatever you have at that point?
Yes, right, 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 yes. Absolutely.
May I ask, just for clarification now, so when you come and after the group has met, our, our recommendation is going to be made to the board, like the configuration of the Midway-Duval schools, and then able to make their recommendation as to how they think that should be done?
Yes, yes. When the final plan is presented to you, it will be in the organization of a recommendation of the projects that they recommend to be put on the bond call, but you will also have the other projects listed that did not make that list because of some set money amount.
I'm still back on, not that I'm not concerned about the money part, I've talked about the configuration of those schools.
Yes.
Is that-
That will be a part of it.
Yes.
Right, that has to be part of it.
That's right. And I don't want you to be disappointed on the 22nd. Realistically, we may not have a firm recommendation on every school and every project, but we're going to be a lot closer than we are tonight, okay? And I'm suggesting that these are ideas at this point for discussion, and the committee's discussing them, and other, the board's thinking about these topics and, and, you know, through this discussion, we'll, we'll make a good decision. And I have no doubt that the committees, not only is their heart in the right place, their head's in the right place, okay? And, but it's a challenge. And, and, and I think this next meeting, though, will take a, a good step forward. If you'd been at the meeting last night, you might doubt what I just said.
I would.
Yeah, well, you know, people are spirited. They're really, you know, they want the best for their school, and, and that's good. That's a good thing. That's a good thing, yeah.
You should be able to discuss all the, all the variables, you know, what cost-wise do you have?
But there are some narrowing, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yeah, there are some narrowing techniques that we can use that are fair and that everyone will have some legitimate input. And so we're going to, superintendent's going to encourage all of that committee, parents and staff and others, to be there at the next meeting because it's an important meeting.
Let me go here.
Yes, I'm. Okay. And you can't make a decision right now, and shouldn't, but we also still need to think about when, you know, and in these meetings, we heard a lot of people say maybe December or January, so that's our recommendation right now. I think that's something for the board, though, to be thinking about and ready to make a fairly quick decision once, once the bond call's put together. Dave, you want to talk about the process we use as far as when, when these ideas come together, and CEFP agrees, and goes to Charleston, and the board approves, and so forth?
Sure. Once the, once the list of ideas comes to you as a, as an official list, and make a recommendation for you to approve as a board, or change, or if you have other ideas, that's, that's entirely up to you. Once that process starts, we will have at that point also, in line with whatever monies that you agree on to go for a bond, we'll have an indication from the school building authority on what they would participate in as well. They like to make those recommendations along with you and your projects, and they want to be involved. I was speaking with them today. They'd like to be involved as soon as possible to help, help you figure out how much money you're going to spend and how much money they would like to contribute. And once that process starts, for instance, if we go to vote in December 15th, that would mean that along, by September 1st, we would have to have our bond call set. Legally, it's, I think it's 85 days prior to the vote. I haven't been back and looked at the document, but it's, it's almost 90 days prior that we would have to set our bond call. So everything would have to be decided and written and legally done by September 1st. So we have a few months to get all that taken care of, but time ticks away pretty quick if you're not careful. So we want to encourage the committee to get through the process at the next meeting, and we did, takes another meeting, takes another meeting, but we'll encourage them to get that done as quick as possible. So we do have a list, and so we can work on the money and get with the SBA and start that process.
Can the SBA amount be on the ballot?
They would-
Can that be part of it?
That can, it can be part of it.
The voters would know now, but it's not just the state.
Typically, the way the ballot would be set up, you'd have each project listed, if you have to buy- If you have to buy property, that's listed. All those things are itemized and dollar amounts are associated with each project. And if the SBA has participation in a project, their dollar amount is also listed on there so you would know which project they would be participating in and how much that dollar amount would be set for.
And we would do everything possible to make sure that they're giving us a firm answer now.
And then what would also happen is in November, this coming November, that would be what you would be submitting to the School Building Authority as a needs project for the following year. So that when March comes and your interview is set for your needs project, by March, you would want to have your bond positive, passed bond vote in hand and you walk into your interview and say, here, I've passed my bond. Now, I'd like to start the process of getting your money so we can start, we've already started our process as far as design and drawings and doing all that. We'd like to start your process with the School Building Authority. You really don't want to wait till after you have that to go to your vote. You want to have your vote in hand before you go to your interview for your project.
Well, the site also would need to be...
Identify, yes.
At least?
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
The way it typically works on a bond call, if you do have to choose a site and you know where that site is and hopefully you've started talking to that person or that property owner prior to, if you have to purchase it, so that after the bond passes, the price doesn't go up. Hopefully you've started negotiations prior to that. That happens a lot.
Surely it will happen.
But a lot of times, what owners will do is they'll say in the vicinity of a certain area so it doesn't lock you into one price, one parcel of land. Because once you put that into bond call, you can't deviate. You have to buy that parcel of land if you say that's where it's going to go. So we want to be careful about our words. We can talk with the bond council on how to word that specifically so that it doesn't lock you in if we're unsure when come time of bond vote.
There's also...
As long as we say the vicinity of that.
There's also some chance that if you're thinking about a certain site and you do core drilling or you do certain, you learn things after the fact and you can't build there. So there's some protection in saying in the vicinity of.
Well, I'm much concerned by that as far as the price.
I know, I know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's happened to a couple counties in that.
Yeah.
What would you do if you wouldn't sell it? I mean, you have to go through that process if you hadn't had that site. It's not a lot of sites, you know, a lot of choices in these areas for a large school.
Well, and that opens the door for direct contact prior to, you know, so that you get a good feel for that hopefully before, so you can go back. And no board wants to condemn property.
Do you want to please it for you?
We might ask and we still got five folks here, literally everybody in the room here. If there's anything you want to add to the discussion or the report that was given.
You got any more questions with us or?
I just have one. I'm Duvall. I'm trying to understand the rationale. I may know. If you build a new, one is if you keep it at 6 to 8, you're going to build a new school. But if you're going to have PK to 8, you're going to renovate the school.
No, no. No, you just need to renovate it either way.
It says build new middle school for the existing 6 to 8. So that's building a new middle school just for the 6 to 8 kids, the way I understand that.
They did talk about that.
Well, I'm just reading what I'm saying. I'm trying to understand this because to me, it's almost backwards. If you keep it 6 to, if you go 6 to 8, you're going to build a new school for 6 to 8. But if you keep, make it a PK to 8 school like it is now, you're going to renovate that school.
I think we talked about, correct me if I'm wrong. It says, it says build new middle school for 6 to 8, but we also talked about, I think this was the majority, the consensus was when we moved, if we moved the pre-K 5 out and moved them to Smerica or wherever, we talked about renovating that existing school for 6 to 8.
But that this said, that's what...
Well, that's probably a typo. It should say renovate.
I mean, it should be just the opposite of that.
Is that correct?
Yes, and you know, the question that came up yesterday was when you were talking about configuration, Steve, you know, are we going to keep a consistent configuration throughout the county? You know, you have PK 8 at Harts, you've got a PK 8 at Hamlin. You know, are we going to mix up all these configurations? Also, are we being responsible as far as transportation goes? Are we creating ourselves problems in the future? Duvall is certainly in the end of the attendance area. Ace is Midway, you know? How is that going to affect kids? You know, how responsible is that and how's that going to affect transportation costs when you start having to bus kids along the way? You know, ideally, you know, I don't know what we're going to do. I feel like he said point blank in the meeting, Duvall, more or less, you're going to spend a lot of money to renovate and you're still going to have to own buildings. And that wasn't, in our meeting at Duvall, that wasn't, the renovation wasn't the top priority. We talked about two buildings in the middle, a middle school, have like a campus, a middle school building. And because the people in the Duvall area do not seem to want the, and the people in the Midway area don't seem to want them all in one building. So could you have a campus with your middle school building and your PK 5? I'm a big proponent of 5-8, but you know, that works for us. But Duvall's kind of going to get renovated and, you know, it may be the very same configuration, but we're still going to have the transportation issues.
Those are clearly discussions we still have to follow up on. I mean, it's, it's difficult at this point to say what that recommendation will be, but Brenda, I guess we clarified what this should say right now, okay? Anything else? Anybody? I would say this, that it's my impression, as we had all these community meetings, that everyone had an opportunity to voice whatever thoughts they had. And a lot of people shared a lot of thoughts and that's a good thing. And so I think the committee is taking it serious to give consideration to those ideas. Clearly, we can't do what everybody wanted. But on the 22nd, we hope to come with a list of ideas that shows we've made progress from where we are right now. And I think we're pleased that where we are, we've made a lot of progress, but we've got a good ways to go, Steve. And I want to say one last thing. Superintendent, Jeff, Brenda, everybody here has been 100% involved with this. And that's important because people see that and they know it's important because people are involved. If people aren't, don't show up or whatever, then that's a concern. But they really did a great job and I think the community's well served because of that.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Thank you, now.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Do you get me to understand that you're doing great? Well, in my chance.
Well, that's right. But I mean, at least there's some I can think about because there were so many variables.
Board renovation.
That's right. Exactly.
I already signed a phrase.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that's the whole discussion. We'll close your floor, please.
Now, if we're going to go on with the board technical writing or?
We could, Charles here.
We don't have anybody.
Nobody's speaking.
No, I don't. I want to go get my technical report, please.
Okay.
And give you a much correct, helpful information. The Constitution to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, one side of this.
On this promotion, second to approve amendments of April 17th, back toward and recommend. So do Wilkinson.
Second.
Frey'sley. How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes. And old public comments. That's a motion, second amendment treaty vitamins.
True.
Ben. Okay, Chris.
Okay. Item A, student transfers for the remainder of the 2011, 2012 school year. B, an outstate trip for West Hamlin Elementary students to Cincinnati, Ohio, May the 24th through the 25th, 2012. All expenses paid by the crew and it will be transported by my private coach. This is the fifth grade. C, revised policies for 30-day public review and comment of computer technology networks policy 7540, stack network and internet acceptable use and safety policy 7540.04. Student network and internet acceptable use and safety policy 7540.03. D, three additional appointed days for LCHS Guidance Council of Breaking Change through June 2012. This was requested by Mr. Sands. This is something that has occurred.
You know, particularly, is this the transcript or?
Yes, it is.
Any more questions on the amendment treaty vitamins?
Are these policies state mandated or are they? Okay, so there's no local influence really, is there?
Oh.
Okay.
It had to be adopted by your officers.
And what's in blue is new?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes. On end, Simon.
You know, I didn't even go down to the good board.
You got any questions on any of them?
I'll be glad to go get her.
Give me a motion and second on...
I'll make the motion.
Frey'sley.
I second.
Yeah, okay, now, you got any questions?
No, I do not. Actually, I had one, but I didn't have to ask her anyway.
I'm sorry. I'll go get her.
She's still here.
I just want to, I just want to see some invoices that I can stop that on the way. Is she still here?
Yeah, because she thinks we're meeting at six o'clock.
Don't, don't, I'll just go later. It was just a particular invoice, so I can ask her. She'll have it down there.
Okay. Now, ask for a vote now.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yes. Personnel, ask for a motion.
I'm in. I second.
Everybody got the new revised...
Yes. Okay. On the personnel schedule, section A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. B, transfer of service personnel. C, employment of service personnel. D, retirement and/or a resignation for each of the listed personnel.
We just had one change on that?
We actually had two, the last two, seven and eight, were added.
Mr. Ellison for the technology, we had a sub.
Yes, yes. He was hired for next year. Mr. Ellison had been hired for next year. We have a sub.
So his retirement period is here.
Right, correct.
It was so-called.
E, leave of absence for the personnel.
So we have a counselor taking over. I guess we've had somebody that's standing.
Yes, we have, yes.
And this should be coming back just...
Yes, yes.
I got it. I'm saying, correct.
Okay.
Ask for a vote on the personnel?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Any comments or concerns?
Can I ask, my calendar shows Board of Education versus Ranavalia next Wednesday. Is that still going on, the hearing?
Yes.
Nothing's changed.
Unfortunately, we haven't gotten any notification, but it's changed.
So that Wednesday, the ninth. Thank you.
It's not now, so ask for a motion, second to the adjournments. So do Wilkinson. Second. Frey'sley. How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.